Good evening and welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, June 4th. We'll call the meeting in order at seven o'clock. Will you please stand and join me in Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the council meeting. Let's start off right away with roll call, Nate, please.
Sure. Councilmember Schultz, councilmember Bowe.
Here.
Councilmember Rowe, councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Mayor Winchell.
Here. Obviously, councilmember Schultz and councilmember Rowe, I think one's out of the country and one's out of the state, so they will not be joining us tonight. So with any luck, none of us will have to leave for any reason, because if that happens, we're in trouble. So with that, we will move to adopting the agenda, or the corrections or additions to the agenda, if not an entertainment.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
I think we do have a correction to the agenda, correct?
Do we?
You do. Nate's got it.
Dropping off that one item.
We have two, two people vying for the same thing.
Yeah, so the agenda was actually reposted, so you won't find that item on your iPad. Originally, as the agenda was posted, included two permits, permit requests to operate pull tab operations at Willie McCoy's. One was coming from the Lions Club and the other was coming from the Chaska Chan-Hassan Hockey Association.
Okay.
So having received both, you know, just before we edit the agenda out, we decided to keep them both, put them both on the agenda and follow up with Willie McCoy's. Over the weekend, they were able to clarify for us that they're moving forward with a lease agreement with the Lions Club and will be moving forward with the Chaska Chan-Hassan Hockey Association. So now, as the agenda's been updated, you only see on there the request for permit for Lions. But you've got both on there?
Lions still show both.
Okay. Well, then we may want to do an amendment to the agenda.
I mean...
Just keep it there.
Just eliminate that item from the consent.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, seven H on the paper, but on my electronic. So I don't know if this is the paper one.
Is yours gone?
No, it's on the, yep.
Okay.
The one online actually changed it just to Lions.
To G. Okay, so we dropped to H.
The one on the website, one page.
Okay.
So just our agenda thing.
Yep. So I will make a motion to adopt the agenda with seven H being removed.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion by councilmember Bowe, second by councilmember Geisler, adopting the agenda with the removal of H, which everywhere else but our iPads, which we have a new agenda system that we're going to stumble through tonight, is still there, so we should be all right. We have a motion and second discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries, moves us on to visitor presentation. On my list, I have the Tour de Tanca event with Jenny, all right, we'll just call her Jenny.
Biderka.
What is it? Biderka?
Biderka.
Biderka.
Kind of a tough one.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Jenny Biderka. I work with Minnetonka Community Education, and I'm here tonight to talk about Tour de Tanca in our 13th year, an event that goes through Chaska, and we really enjoy being a part of your community in the summer. So a little recap of last year and what is to come for this year. So first, we'll kind of go around the wheel here of the numbers. So 24 is the number of communities we will travel through with Tour de Tanca this year. 616 is the number of volunteers that we had involved in Tour de Tanca last year. 88 is our oldest participant in Tour de Tanca last year. And then the bottom two are a little bit about financials. So we spent $22,235 working with police and fire and security companies to provide safety at the event. And we also spend $11,954 on food for our rest stops that happen across the event. 108 agencies we work with to put the event together, and 42 states have been represented at Tour de Tanca over the last 12 years. We're always looking for volunteers, as we said, we had six, over 600. So if anyone's interested in volunteering, that can mean helping people cross streets, serving food at a rest stop, helping with registration, lots of different opportunities. Visit our website, tourde tanca.org, and you can also go there to register for the events. In 2017, we had seven ride distances for participants, and as you can see, the most popular was the 30 mile and the 100 mile. Each of those had over 700 riders. We had just shy of 3,500 riders in the event last year. And riders came from 166 different communities, 40 counties, 25 states, and two countries. These are kind of what I spoke about earlier. These are all the states that have participated, and these are the ones in red that we're looking to recruit. So if you know anyone who might want to come to visit Minnesota from one of these states, let them know about our information. We list kind of the top communities. Each year, we look at the top communities in participation and how much those have changed. So this is our top 10. Chaska comes in at 11, and a growing group with 10 more riders last year over 2016. So hopefully, we'll grow again this year. And then that is our communities up through 40. The demographics for Tour de Tanca are very consistently that age group between 30 and 50, and it's typically, they're our highest participating, and typically, it's about 60% men, 40% women. Our youngest rider last year was four, and as I said earlier, our oldest was 88. So we have something for everyone. We do support our local ICA food shelf in participant registrations. We do collection onsite, and to date, we've raised over $60,000 for the ICA, so they're a great partner. These are the communities we will be traveling through this year on the various ride distances, including Chaska. And we work with a lot of different police and fire departments to put on this event, and that's a really important part of the safety component. For 2018, we have eight ride options, so that's the most we've ever had. So there's 16 miles, 30 miles, 36, 48, 57, 62, 71, and 100. So we really have something for everyone, stuff that's more trails, more road, and varying distances. This is our big map that sort of covers all of the places we travel. So depending on the ride distance that you choose, you'll be in Minnetonka for sure, but then we head out to Delano, Watertown, Norwood Young America, so some of those longer distance rides get quite a scenic tour of the west metro. We have 13 rest stops along the way, which are a lot of fun. We have a bike mechanic at all of them to help with any safety bike concerns. We always have a band or a DJ, so fun atmosphere, a lot of food, and just a nice camaraderie for the riders. We have one here in Chaska at Pioneer Park, which is very popular and a great location. And just want to recognize the many sponsors that we have that make the event possible, which include Tonka Bay Marina, Domino's Pizza, Maple Grove Cycle, Bridgewater Bank, Park Dental, Boyer Building Corporation, Subaru, Cub in Minnetonka, and Invicta. And then we have two safety sponsors, Twin Cities Orthopedics and North Memorial Health. This is our shirt that the riders will receive this year. This is the women's, and we also have a men's cut as well. And all of volunteers also get shirts. They'll look a little bit different, and all riders and volunteers will also receive a baseball cap that Invicta has donated this year. We brought for you guys today a little gift. It's a pop socket for your phone, so feel free to enjoy that. And then just here's a few photos from last year of some of the fun along the way, and we hope to see you all. I know we have at least one councilmember who'll be joining us, so we'll hope to see you all on August 4th for Tour de Tanca. I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Will it be warm and sunny?
I hope so. We're kind of on a three or four-year streak of good weather, so knock on wood.
What you wish for, could be 100 and sunny.
That's true.
Yes.
True. It's a fun event, and I'm really looking forward to it again this year, so thank you.
Great. Well, we're excited to have you. Thank you for participating.
Pretty awesome turnout.
Yeah, it's been great.
And all ages, as you say.
Yes.
That's part of the fun of it. Lot of families.
Lot of families, yep, and a lot of more serious riders, so yep, something for everybody.
All right. Awesome. Well, thanks for coming in.
All right. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Good luck on your event.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Hopefully, it'll be rate free.
Yes, we hope so. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I know they're not on the agenda, but I know the fire department is here and would like to come and talk to us at this time, so Chief Levy, if you want to come on up. Fire Marshal Gravel, I don't know who's going to do this, but... And the new guys.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, thanks for having us tonight. We just wanted to take a few minutes here tonight to introduce you to our new fire inspectors that we hired. We have Zach Bonama and Travis Lindberg. They were hired about a month ago, and unfortunately, this is kind of the first opportunity to get down here for a council meeting and introduce them. A little history, both are current paid-on-call firefighters. They actually started in our organization as fire explorers. So I won't ask them how young they were when they started, but younger than I am. They were then went from fire explorers to paid-on-call firefighters, and we're very fortunate to have them now as our two full-time firefighter inspectors. Again, they are, their priority is rental inspections, which I'm sure you're aware of, the challenges and the demand out there for rental inspections. And also, the benefit they bring is they also help us with our daytime response. Where a lot of fire departments across not only this county but state across this country is really struggling with daytime response in the paid-on-call market, which they do offer to help out with adding a little bit more staffing to our daytime. So I'll add to Fire Marshal. Actually, our Fire Marshal, Kevin Gravel, is kind of their direct report, kind of the mentor and coach to help them through this beginning process of their new career.
Yeah, so there were 10 applicants. It went through three rounds of interviews, and we're just really fortunate that we were able to get Zach and Travis. Both come to us with education as well. Travis is seeking a master's degree right now, and is a paramedic, and Zach has an associate's degree in fire science. So the good part is they're very tech savvy. Me and the chief aren't that tech savvy, so they help immensely. And they've hit the ground running. Travis was our part-time inspector before. They've been out and done a number of inspections already, and really, we have around 2,600 right now. We have another 1,000 identified that we think are potential rentals, so...
So you're saying there's 2,600 rentals that we know of, and there's a potential for another 1,000?
Correct.
Wow.
We have a list that we've tracked through stormwater billing as well as utility billing, and then we go through GIS to mirror those up to see if it's homesteaded. And if it isn't, then we send out a letter. And about 60% of those we've sent letters to have come back with a license and a payment. So we're just starting this process. It's going to take some while to get through that, because there's a lot of investigative work that goes on with it.
I'm glad they're doing inspections. I'm glad they're doing inspections on rental properties.
So are we. So are we.
Just sheer safety, if nothing else.
Yeah, I mean, really, they're in the middle. They're there to help the tenant as well as the owner, so it's a great network and resource, so... We also encourage them to go to the coffee meetings at the senior buildings just to introduce themselves, let them know about fire safety and extension cords and all those kinds of things, so really trying to be that community firefighter and inspector. Questions?
Welcome, you guys.
I think maybe come up here and say your names, so that they're pointing at you, but not everybody knows who's who.
I'm Travis Lindberg.
I'm Zach Bonama.
How long you been on the department?
I've been on four years, so, four years paid-on-call. It's coming up on eight.
Very good. Thank you.
Awesome.
We're just really fortunate, you know, to have them, your support for helping fund these new positions, and I think it's really, in my eyes, it's already made a big difference in just 30 days. So there's a lot of businesses, and there's a lot of the research and investigative work that we're going in to making sure we are identifying all the rental properties. And now we have staffing to do follow-ups, where we haven't had that in the past, so... You know, in my years, you know, over the fire service, I would tell you that, you know, inspections weren't a priority when I first got on a department, but as I aged and lost hair through my career, I have found that inspections is really the key. If we really want to keep people safe in this community, it's really the inspection piece of the puzzle that is very, very important. It's not necessarily the glamorous, fun part, and there's challenges to work through with owners and tenants, but it's really making a difference in our community and keeping our community safe.
I think you touched on the important part is the follow-up, because, you know, you can go out, or you have a call there, and you see these things, but if nobody follows up, people realize that and don't finish what they should have started. And now, I think with the follow-up, I think that that will help clean up a lot of things that are... The biggest thing is, is most people out there, the 1.2 million watching right now, have no clue really what's happening, except for maybe the neighbor next to that house. They're usually the ones that always seem to suffer the worst, so that's why I think that this is, this will be good. The numbers are kind of staggering to me. I just didn't realize that, because we just got something from the Met Council. What do we have, like, isn't it like 11,000 homes? I mean, if you take down those numbers, that's a third is rental.
Yeah, we're a little bit over a third of that in Chaska are rental. You know, when markets turned down, you know, people didn't sell their houses, they rented them. And you know, now they become this expert landlord that are supposed smaller rules, and that's where, I would tell you, our, most of our time is spent is single-family. The apartment complexes, the bigger stuff, they have management companies that they really are on top of it. It's really the single-family piece is really that's been haunting us for many years, but now we're, now we're getting after it, and now we're getting in and making them safe too.
A lot of times, it helps the renter too, because they can't get the landlord to do or fix something that could be a pretty severe hazard or kill somebody.
Yeah, absolutely. It's that quality of life piece.
Absolutely.
And we know this is where people die. 80% of the fire deaths happen where people feel the most comfortable, where they sleep. So we know that we're getting in and effectively hitting 7,000 residents in the city of Chaska every two years, so...
I'm glad to see the program is failing.
This is the right direction.
And the things we see out there, it's staggering to see what's, from heat lamps to extension cords, just to... We had one individual that was heating his unit with a fishhouse heater in a multifamily building.
Wow. Car from the next side.
So, I mean, we are, we are definitely making a difference.
I really think this is going to, this in combination with the stuff we're talking about with code compliance, I think is going to make a huge difference on what people see with us addressing issues in the community, because I think Tim's exactly right, is that the issues aren't typically in the big multifamily projects. They're typically in single-family homes. And if people aren't in the business of managing rental properties, sometimes they don't even understand the challenges that come with that. And I think, I think the chief is right, that we're being an advocate for the landlord too, because ultimately, that's their asset. And if they're not managing it in a way that's, you know, good for everybody, they could potentially lose that asset.
Or not be able to rent it out again. Yeah, very much so.
And our hope now too is with having these inspectors really focusing on rental, that our Fire Marshal can get out into the business community and our industrial parks, where that's been a piece that we haven't been able to get in, because the focus has been rental. So our plan is now to get back in to the business, commercial piece of it, and, you know, making sure that's all really good, not for the safety of our community, safety of our firefighters, safety of the business and the employees that work there.
I agree. What's your part?
I know, I'm very proud, I know the Fire Marshal are very proud to have these two. They're both Chaska residents. They both were born and raised in Chaska, went to Chaska High School, so...
So they're kind of new to the short.
Homegrown, they're very, very proud, very excited. I know even Zach's parents are here, so they're very excited to see Zach in his position.
Let's say if the parents, I know the parents were here, if they want to come up here and take pictures, you're more than welcome to...
You'll get a great shot from back here.
Rather than they were back, so it's up to you before they run away. Because I know they're going to run away here real quick, they don't want to be in here.
There you go.
Oh, that's so nice. Photo bombing. Well, awesome. Well, thanks for coming in. I don't know if you have more. I mean, I know you got training tonight, so if you guys want to...
Thank you for your support.
Take off.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Yep. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. Good luck. Keep up the good work.
Absolutely. That's good.
All right. Is there anyone else under visitor presentation tonight? All right. We will move on to item number six, which is normally approving the minutes, but there was an issue with our audio, and the minutes could not be taken, so we will have to approve those at a future date. So we'll skip over six and move on to item seven, which is consent agenda. And again, for anyone that's not sure, consent agenda are items that need to be approved, but not necessarily have to have a conversation on, but can be if someone requests a conversation regarding it. So with that, if there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion for a consent.
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by councilmember Geisler.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Second by councilmember Bowe, that's good, because otherwise, I would have... To approve the consent agenda discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries, moves us now to item number eight, which is a letter of a 10 Part 30 golf course partnership with Learning Links.
Mayor, councilmember, the item in front of you tonight is something that was discussed at the May 21st City Council Work Session, where we heard of a potential partnership opportunity between the city of Chaska with our Part 30 golf course and a 501(c)(3) nonprofit group called the Learning Links of Chaska. We have some representatives here tonight who are representing the group. So one of the things that the city staff has been looking at over some time, and we see John Kellin out here from, from our golf course, our golf pro, it's one of the things that we've been looking at for quite some time, is sort of two things. First of all, is the need for capital improvements and replacement into the Part 30 golf course. A couple of things that I've talked about with the council during budget process is both our need for replacement of our original irrigation system in the facility, which is over $300,000 to improve, as well as we've been renting the parking facility each year from the Hazleton Gates Office Building, which is really just cost prohibitive as we look over time to continue to lease parking space for a permanent fixture that we have within our assets. At the same time, one of the things that we've been looking at is a decrease in play that we've seen at the Part 30, especially as we've seen more competition with more executive golf courses in the southwest metro area, and also at the same time, when our town course opened up back in 1997, by 2001 or 2002, we went from really about 31,000 rounds per year, and right now, we're probably about 15,000 to 16,000 rounds per year. So we have a lot of capacity that we're looking for ways to really improve the usage of the course, do some of the capital maintenance that we need to do, and look to make this a sustainable place as we go into the future. One of the things that made this intriguing, this partnership intriguing to us is Learning Links of Chaska really has a goal of making the game of golf more accessible to the broadest range of golfers possible. So that could be anywhere from helping people who have physical disabilities to be able to get out and have a course that's designed to be able to accommodate them, to people who might have intellectual, physical challenges, but also ones that might be new to the game of golf and don't have an opportunity to learn it and be on a facility that's actually caters towards growing the game of golf. One of the things that's required for them to be able to accomplish the goal is really to build a course from the ground up, because a course really has to be designed to be able to accommodate, physically accommodate people with disabilities. And, you know, designing the holes and the fairways to allow for equipment such as accessible carts and things like that to be able to get around easily, also bunkers that were not making the course so difficult that it's, that it can't be accessible. I think one of the reasons that it's been intriguing for us to look at this as a potential idea is having to do the capital improvements with the, especially the irrigation system at the course, is going to require us to do quite a bit of rework on the golf course to begin with, and if we were going to do anything, now's the opportunity to really look at that, because we're already making investments. And really, the question ends up being is, is there a way for us to leverage the around $500,000 improvements that we need to make in the course to make it sustainable over time, and be able to really increase the usage of the course and accessibility to more people, so we don't just put in resources to make these improvements and end up with the exact same result. So the, under a proposed partnership, basically, what the Learning Links of Chaska would do is to go out and really try to raise dollars towards making those capital improvements to the course, based on a concept that's been put together. It'd be about $2.6 million to reestablish the course based on this concept. Our initial thought is, is that we have $500,000 improvements that we know we'd have to make, and that by us committing to this, thought would be is that we could leverage those dollars with an additional $2.1 million of private donations, in-kind services, things like that, to really make this a better facility, and at the same time, also really make this a training facility. One of the things John Kellin, our golf pro, has talked about is, we really could make this a premier facility, not just for the golfers that the Learning Links are trying to attract, but also the golfers that we tend to see as our main group of patrons right now, who are juniors and seniors. And be able to have a training facility to really increase our ability to bring in more people into the game of golf. To really sort of explore this further, one of the things that the Learning Links of Chaska really needs is to have some kind of a letter of intent to be able to indicate that, you know, that there's at least worth the effort going forward, and seeing what kind of opportunities there are for raising these dollars, and how a potential partnership could look, so that they have some confidence being able to go out and talk to potential funders, that this is a concept that's worth exploring more. You will see to the, attached to the staff report, a proposed letter of intent that both talks about the purpose, the project vision, the anticipated timelines, and then the roles of each of the organizations in this, and really sort of laying out the broader concepts of how this potential partnership could work. Should be noted that, you know, this is really a first step in this process, certainly as we're going through the process, if this, if we move forward and it's looking like this is a concept that, that looks like it could work, and we're able to accomplish the goals that we've established out there, that really, you know, there'd be a, you know, like our typical processes for, for improvements that we make to courses, you know, that there's a engagement process as part of that, to be able to make sure that, you know, that we really are meeting the goals that we're attempting to here. Because, you know, one of the things that makes this idea sort of neat is that it's really sort of starting with the current population of people that we have out there and saying, you know, right now, we have senior league, a women's league, a junior league, and then these different times that there's open golf. and then these different times that there's open golf for people in the community to come. It's really saying, let's keep everything that we have right now and make the improvements we need to course, but look at how we fill in those other times during the course of the day or week to be able to take that, you know, fifteen thousand round capacity that we have and is really sort of unused and be able to not only utilize that, but also do it in a way that makes this course as accessible and usable as possible. I really think that one of the unique things of this potential partnership is that if we were to be a part of this, it really looks like we'd be first golf course in the country that really is sort of designed from the ground up to be inaccessible, fully accessible golf course. So, you know, hopefully being a role model for other facilities out there in the future. I can certainly answer any questions you might have. You can see that the recommendation that we're making is to approve the proposed letter of intent between the city of Chaska and the Learning Links and authorizing the mayor and myself to enter into this LOI on behalf of the city. And again, that would allow them to have the confidence to be able to move forward and see, is it feasible to be able to raise these dollars to put this concept in place?
Again, there's been some, I did get a, I think we all read an email today from someone showing some concern there, and I think you did a good job explaining that, again, this is a letter of intent, nothing's happening at this point. There definitely would be a public process, what that is today, we don't really know, but there are a bunch of processes in place that would, will happen as we move forward. And again, I think this is an opportunity for us to do something that's completely out of the box, let's just call it. But we're in dire need of doing a lot of things at the course, and I think this is a great way to, a great opportunity for us all to look at and see if we can make this happen. I think this is, if we can make this happen, this is a great partnership that, something that, you know, we talked about, you know, private-public partnerships, and here's a great example. If everything comes together, which I believe they feel pretty confident about, so.
Well, I think one of the sort of unique aspects of this is we have to put money back into the course. Whether or not we had a partnership like this, we'd have to put money back into the course. You know, I think Learning Links of Chaska have recognized that being able to cater to our existing patrons that are out there is something that has to happen in this. So really, the two things that we would accomplish through doing this ourself, I think, can be accomplished through this, it's really additive. It's really saying, how do we take something that we'd already have to do and add something on that could be a bigger community benefit?
I would draw from a huge area if we did it. Maybe one question, too, for anybody that might have looked at the packet and the letter, that it shows Tim Anderson, board chair of Learning Links, but it shows Pinehurst, North Carolina.
Yeah.
But with a Minnesota phone number.
Yeah, so Tim Anderson is actually, he's a member of Hazelton. He's actually been a resident of Chaska for a long time. Pinehurst is actually where he lives mainly during winter time, snowbird. He gets to, he gets to get out of here in the wintertime, so this is not a corporation out of
That might confuse people, that's all they saw.
North Carolina. Tim has been a member of the community, and we have actually some community members that are part of this group who really started their work trying to work with Hazelton on this, and really it's evolved to them working with us. But this is definitely a locally based group. It's a group that really has a passion to go out and see this game grown and are looking at how they can potentially partner with us here in the city.
And again, I know that there's a group out here, if someone wants to come up and say a few words, you're more than welcome to. Mr. Kellin?
Come on down.
I, I, I'm just giving you an opportunity. If you choose not to, that's fine. But if you do, you gotta come up here, because they won't hear you at home.
That's one of their questions. We're happy to. Anything you want us to add?
No, I mean, it's, I think this has really been an iterative process as we've gone through and really, you know, we sort of started this process by being looked at at Hazelton and doing it in some of the property that they have over an open area. I personally think that this is a much better option for the community with this, because, you know, one of the, you know, concerns we had is if you create two competing golf courses right next to each other, that actually almost makes our problem worse. So this is a way how we leverage both of our resources to try to come up with something that's better for the community and helps meet this Learning Links goal of making golf more accessible to everybody.
It'd be the first of its kind in this country, right?
That would be designed up. There's courses out there that have worked at making it accessible, and it can be as, as little as having golf carts that are, that are able to be used by people with disabilities, to other things that might be design things, but this would be really from the ground up and saying, how do we, you know, how do we make something that, you know, quite frankly is accessible, but it also, I think, is a lot friendlier to our current patrons, who, you know, the juniors are new to golf and they're trying to learn. And a lot of our seniors are people who may have used to golf on the town course, and it's just too much now. And they're not looking for that in their game anymore. They're looking to just go off and have a good time and not be necessarily physically challenged to go out there and do that.
Is it, and this is probably going to be that question for you guys. Is this, then, do they change how they design the surface of the course? I mean, to make it more firm for, I mean, I know they can already take golf carts there, and what they'd be using would probably be just a modified one, but do they do anything different? Or I know that used to be a pretty wet facility, that's where we just do more drainage?
I have to remove a lot of the peat that's in there?
You gotta come up here, they won't hear you, John, sorry. Just say who you are.
John Kellin.
From the Chaska Town Course. Right now, it's, it's very boggy over there, as you know.
Right.
And the handicap accessible vehicles would struggle in that. So, and we haven't gotten into the details of the physical improvements, other than a lot of the peat would be brought out, a lot of new dirt brought in, a much firmer, flatter surface, not bog-like.
That's, I kind of figured out how to be done, but I didn't
Has to happen.
If that, you know.
Because that's, that's even an issue for us now, just for the golfers that we have up there.
Especially if you have a little couple days.
Yes.
Tear it up.
Drive a cart, you should wear a weightlifting belt for your kidneys.
Yeah, that's true, that's rough out there. All right, thanks, John, thanks.
It's a little bit like Miracle Field, a little bit.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah, I think it's sort of along that same line as Miracle Field, is how do you make those sports that weren't traditionally accessible to people accessible to as many people as possible?
In addition to the partnership and working together to make those changes that are necessary and upgrades, I'm really excited about the fact that it will welcome a whole new group of people to the game of golf and make it accessible for them to give it a try and find the joy that comes with that, so it's very exciting.
The word will spread.
What's that?
The word will spread.
Well, absolutely. I think if, you know, once that, that, this concept gets out there and starts being discussed and it becomes a reality, I think that it would probably be, it'll be, you know, be interesting. Because as I said, it's something most people hadn't had an opportunity to ever try before, so. And then we would have the carts there for them, is that correct? Okay. Cool.
Yeah.
Right, you know, irrigation in the parking lot are such a big piece that, if you can get that done, that's huge right there. Would change a lot, so. All right, anything else for these guys?
Well, and I'd really, if we have to spend money anyway, it, to me, I think it's the wrong thing to spend dollars and get the same result.
Right. I mean, we could probably do some of those, you know, fix-ups as we put an irrigation system. You're not going to be able to do what this could potentially bring for us, an opportunity to do, so.
You kind of want the facility to support itself, and it's not going that direction.
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it, it supports itself operationally now. It's not a huge operation. I mean, we, our budget's right around a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars a year operationally, but we generate about as much as we spend. And so what the real issue ends up being is not how do we pay for the operations in any given year? It's how do you make improvements?
Yep.
You know, because there's, without, you know, coming up with those additional dollars from somewhere else, you know, we're not generating enough to put a reserve away to be able to make those improvements.
And that's a pretty big hit all at one time.
Absolutely, it is.
Yeah.
We probably haven't done an improvement there since we moved that clubhouse to that spot, right?
Which is thirty years ago? I mean, it's
Well, it's not that long, is it?
Why, I've been here for twenty, and it's been there as long as I've been here.
What's Dole going to talk about? He doesn't have to talk about the irrigation anymore. Dole is one of, is the maintenance guy out there, and he talks about the irrigation a lot. He reminds us that it needs replacing, pretty regular, right? All right, any other questions or comments from you guys? Otherwise, I, I think that we're, is that point, we're
As you say, a lot of opportunities yet for more discussion as we move forward.
Well, absolutely. This is again, this is basically saying, we like the concept, let's keep moving, let's see what happens, and
And the public will be brought into it at some point.
And there'll be, there'll be other processes as we move forward, but this is, again, like a concept plan for a neighborhood.
Yep.
No different, so. Right, with that?
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve.
All right, what is this called again? Has this got a name?
Letter of intent.
I gotta get back here to this thing.
Yep, letter of intent.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Bowe to, to approve the letter of intent to par thirty golf partnership with Learning Links.
Yep.
I have a second.
I will second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler to, again, the letter of intent for the par thirty, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
Motion carries. They're approved. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it. Moves us now to item number nine, which is bills. Anyone? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion my first.
Motion by Councilmember Geisler.
I will second that.
Second by Councilmember Bowe to pay the bills. Discussion. Hearing none. Nate, what do you call roll?
Yes, Councilmember Bowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Geisler.
Yes.
Mayor Wishel.
Yes. All right, moves us to item number ten, other business. Mr. Bowe.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing this week. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Geisler.
I just have one thing, something that I noticed, it kind of scared me the other day. Right in front of Fireman's Park where we have the Hawk system. Okay. I had just come around that corner, a corner of Fireman's Park, going from forty one to sixty one, and there were people crossing, not at the Hawk system, but the other side of that street. And I even slowed down and went, go over there and push the button, you know, for safety reasons. And I wonder, is there, not that I want to sign it, but maybe we need to, saying to people, do not cross here, do not cross here, or go over, you know what I mean? It's, it's kind of scary to me to see them just go out, and it was close.
The challenge we have is that we have that throughout downtown, where people just decide they're going to cross at any certain place and, you know, and it doesn't just happen there, but I've seen it happen numerous places in downtown. Yeah, I think the only thing we really can do is provide an opportunity for people to have a safe access across, and if they choose not to take it, I don't think there's a whole lot
Signage isn't going to do it, because you already have the signage that says there's crossings.
Yeah.
You know, and it just, it goes back to, we had a previous meeting that we're talking about wayfinding signs, is that you can put too much signage and you can't see nothing. I've seen that too, and, you know, we had that conversation when this was being done.
Right.
Which is the better, which is the better walk to do?
Right.
I don't know. It's just, it's that freaky thing, and you know what, you have it everywhere. There's really no way to stop it.
I will say that I've been really pleased with how it's actually worked.
When it does work, yes.
I've seen, I've never seen somebody run one of those red lights where before, when those flashing lights went, people were just driving right through it.
Yep.
But it's been amazing to me how well that has worked.
Yep.
It definitely catches their eye in front of distance and
I was going by on my motorcycle, and there was a group of people standing there, but they, they didn't do nothing. And I, and I said, push the button. And then they, they went to it, and then I could see in my, behind me that they were starting. Because you don't want to stop in a dual lane if, even though it's a crosswalk, but it's a lit one.
Yeah.
Because then somebody else doesn't see it, and it's just, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
It's just, just a little unnerving when I saw that, thinking, here's the Hawk system, just walk a little bit across the street, and it's right there.
So maybe we can just encourage people to go over to it and push the button and
Well, we can do, it's all there.
Just encourage them.
It's all there.
And that's pretty much all I have.
All right. Matt?
Just to point out, in the biweekly this week, I did put in the discussion on body camera policy. This is, if you saw in the Start Tribune this last weekend, they had an article on it. Most suburban police departments in the Twin Cities are going through this whole look now at policies for body camera use. One of the things that was in that memo that really talked about a process that's being used to go out and talk with different groups within the community about, you know, policy. You know, there's all kinds of issues that come with the use of body cameras as far as, you know, how do you protect people's privacy, when are they used, who, you know, do you view them after an incident happens? All these different types of things. And so the policy that's at least being looked at right now is pretty close to what other suburban police departments are using and one that the League of Minnesota Cities has had a chance to take a look at. State statute does require us to go through a public input process, so it'd be like a public hearing process before we do anything. We're not suggesting to jump right into a program, but instead do a pilot program to see how it works. And we actually received approval to get a year of free trial of body cameras for the upcoming year. And our thought was is to use that time period to run a pilot study to see how's the policy working, you know, see if it's something that we think is something we should move forward in the future with permanently. But before we even do that pilot study, we have to have a public hearing based on state statute to take any public comment about the use of body cameras. So I just wanted to point out that's there, and certainly if there's any questions that people have in the council or general public, they can certainly refer them to me or refer them to Chief Knight, too.
Is, is this before we do the trial, or it'd be, even before the trial?
Even before the trial, we have to have a public input process.
Didn't that letter say that we were looking at trying to get this started soon?
Yeah, so we can't get it started until after we hold a public hearing. So one of the things we're looking at is potentially even the next meeting or the first meeting in July to come back and actually have a public hearing on that. We want to make sure that we get through two things. Now, Kevin is working on getting the word out as far as this policy draft exists out there, so people can comment back. But then, like I said in the memo, there's a, there's, I think there was like twelve groups of different citizen groups, like school district and, I, I, I'll forget them. But there was, there was about twelve groups in there that really were going to go out to them and really seek their input. But then we want to get that done before we come back for a public hearing, get their feedback, so that if there are things that we think really should be changed, that we have an opportunity to do that. But then that would be the public's opportunity to come if they have any concerns or questions over it and ask questions about it.
An advanced public hearing, publishing is what, two weeks or three weeks?
It's ten days.
Oh, ten days, oh.
It's ten days, but one of the things we want to make sure, and that's one thing that Kevin and I were just talking about today, is making sure that we get out proper notice, once we know we're going to be ready for this, so that people are aware that this is so that people are aware that this is being discussed.
Yeah.
But, you know, one of the nice things of going through a pilot project first is that it's not the end-all and be-all. I mean, if we go through the pilot project and there's things that we find that work or don't work, uh, there'd be an opportunity to go back and address those before we move to any type of potential permanent system.
Cause that kinda, I guess it kinda surprised me that I was here and not seeing anything prior to, so it was just-
Yeah, it's something that, um, you know, a lot of departments have already implemented it. Um, we have the dash cam system that we've had and, uh, you know, we've had incidents recently where it's been a real benefit to have that, that dash cam system. Um, I mean, clearly there was some incidents in the Twin Cities that sort of drove most police departments to do, uh, the study. And so it's been looked at quite a bit and now it's really just sort of coming back with some of the research at this point to say, here's what we found, here's what recommendations are, those types of things. Um, but from my perspective, I really sort of view the pilot program as being another part of that public input process without just jumping headfirst into it.
Cause it, and I can't remember where I read it, but does it, does it talk about, I, I know that's the big thing. Are they turned on immediately or just when they had, I remember there was a piece in there. It's when they engage, is it when you engage the public? Is that what it was or something? Is that when they're, I know that's always the big issue, like when they're turned on or when they're not.
So Scott's gonna be here to explain that. I'm only gonna do it to service if I try to explain it. But that's really sort of the purpose of having that public meeting is to really come in a public forum and be able to explain that. And that's been the purpose of these, uh, focus groups too, is to really sort of explain what that means. Cause those are the questions people have is, you know, uh, one of them is talking with our school district. I mean, you run into issues with privacy when you're dealing with kids. And so, um, you know, so there's all those different issues that, uh, that come up with it. That it seems like it's simple on the surface, but it's really pretty complicated. And so, uh, it'll be an opportunity for, um, you know, the chief and then the, the people within, uh, the department, we're listing the memo that have worked on that, to, to come in and really talk about some of those aspects so that really is a, as much a public education piece as anything.
And that the League of Minnesota Cities has also put a great deal of time and worked with so many other cities that have already implemented it that the policy has probably gotten better and better, you know, by the time we're looking at it.
I would think the League of Cities would have a pretty solid policy at this point.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And I mean, I think you saw in the memo, the city of Burnsville implemented this. I mean, even before any of the discussion about this became, uh, I think, to me, one of the interesting things is, and I could be wrong, but I think if you asked a lot of our public whether we have body camera or not, also probably think we do. And so, and I think part of that is because it's become more of an expectation, uh, for residents and transparency, uh, with policing services that, uh, I think more, uh, more people are just sort of expecting that that's a base level of service that police departments are providing. And like I said, we do have it through our dash cam, but there's limitations on that. You know, you can only see what's in front of you.
Or here.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
But I think it's also not, it's not just meant to be a benefit for the police. It's meant to be a benefit for the residents as well. It's a protection for them as well.
It's a protection, it's really a protection for everybody.
Yeah.
You know, cause they're, they're, uh, you can have issues on either side.
That's right.
Okay. So, so basically we need nothing there other than that, that we'll see that coming.
Yep. I just want, more than anything, I just don't want you guys to be surprised by it coming up, that you knew that these discussions were happening as far as going through the, the process of, you know, looking at this kind of a policy, talking to focus groups in the community, getting that feedback. But eventually it does have to come back to you guys and I just didn't want to catch you off guard.
Right. Cause I, the big thing that I've heard through all of these discussions at other places is, storage and we have enough storage for all of that?
That's a huge issue.
That's a huge issue.
It's a little bit less of an issue for us now since we've moved to a cloud-based type of system. I, I can tell you, uh, you know, five years ago, when we had all of our storage through servers down in the basement.
We'd burn it up.
I think, uh, I think Noel would have been sweating.
He would eat it up real quick.
So that's, so that we've got that.
But, I mean, I mean, there's two pieces of that though. There's, there's the actual physical storage, but then there's the cost of it too. So, you know, uh, there's, there's a cost to providing this service and I think that's one of the things that's taken into consideration. The more data we save, the more it costs.
But we also know that one wrongful thing costs you a lot of money and if you have proof one way or the other, it certainly cuts that all down.
Yeah. 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 So I mean, there's a, there's pros and cons to most anything that's out there and, and it's really sort of educating the, the public on that and being able to get feedback on it. And again, hopefully the pilot, taking an approach of a pilot project, I really sort of hope, you know, gives us a chance to learn during that pilot. You know, where a lot of times you'll see, uh, departments might go just right to implementation.
Right. It gives us a year and see if they like the equipment and not put out the-
Yeah, cause I mean, there's also the physical, how do you use the equipment too? I mean, you might go through a process that might be really cumbersome. And, you know, you also don't wanna make, uh, people's jobs overly cumbersome either or it becomes really a pain to you. So I mean, there's lots of factors that go into this.
Okay.
Well, so we're thinking probably sometime in July we would see that.
Um, it, it's possible if we can get things done that we might shoot for, uh, June, uh, at the next meeting. Uh, that's, uh, Kevin and Scott and I are gonna talk tomorrow and, and really get a sense of when we should target for that. But it's gonna be one of the next two meetings.
Yeah. The only thing, you had mentioned something about July second, so close to the holiday, we may move that out.
We are gonna do that. That's, that was the other thing I was gonna mention is that there's three, uh, five Mondays in May, or July. So, uh, we'll only have two meetings. They'll be the third and the fifth Mondays we'll have it. We will not have one on July second.
So that would be like, uh, so we're talking the ninth and the twenty-third? No, the third, sixteen-thirty.
Sixteenth and thirtieth.
Okay.
Yep.
Sixteen and thirtieth would be-
It doesn't really change dates that we had on schedule anyway. It's just eliminating that one on the, we don't have a need for three.
Right, right. So we, the sixteenth is already scheduled, we'd just be adding the thirty versus the second.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So, so either the sixteenth of July or what is it, the other one, the eighteenth of June?
Eighteenth of June.
Eighteenth of June.
Yep. Yep. So a, as soon as we nail it down, I think we're gonna do it tomorrow, uh, then we'll let you know.
All right. Awesome. Okay. Thanks. Anything else?
Nope.
Nate?
Nothing.
All right. I unfortunately got a few things. Um. I just, um, Memorial Day just, just ended. I, you know, um, I thought the services at Memorial Day and, uh, I believe it's Lieutenant Colonel Michael Peterson did an awesome job, uh, speaking. I've never heard so many talk about, uh, the, uh, person that speaks at Memorial Day. So thanks to everyone that puts, somebody asked me who plans that and I said, you know, I don't know who plans it. Everybody just doesn't. I don't know if there's anybody that plans that anymore.
Do the Legion and the-
Oh, I, I think, I think the commanders, I think, have quite a bit to do.
Pretty minute. But anyways, it's just kinda one of those that goes. But thanks to that. Um, the other thing I, I like to say is, I don't know who puts the flags out on two-twelve, uh, on the fence line there. That is so awesome every year. Uh, I, I really wish I knew who it was to say thank you to them. But, um, if they're listening or somebody knows about it, uh, I think it's pretty cool. I think it's a great thing to see as you enter the city. So, thanks for doing that. Um, I got, speaking of that, uh, the Legion commander talked to me, Steve LaSalle, remember he came in and talked about the banners? He was kinda waiting for something from us and, cause I told him, I thought we were waiting something from him. Were, were we, so he's kinda wondering where we're at. Are we comfortable with doing that project? I mean, it's been so long ago now, I'd have to really re, might have to come back in and talk to us. But that is something, maybe you could touch base?
I, I'll fall back up with him.
With Steve and, and, um, do that, but that'd be awesome. I went over by the Veterans Park. I don't think they're gonna make the July fourth deadline.
No.
I think they're off.
I asked, uh, I asked Brian that too. They ran into quite a few delays, uh, as they were going forward this spring. They're definitely gonna get that done this summer.
Hopefully.
Yeah. Yeah.
But anyways, I, I just wanna touch on that because I know we've been saying that it was gonna be, you know, a good share of it completed by the fourth of July. That's not gonna happen.
No.
I, I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, I know that too.
Carver County got ranked first again as the happiest county, so remember that. When you're mad at somebody, just be happy.
Don't worry, we happy.
Um, Matt, can you check into the irrigation, the sprinkler system at Fireman's?
It was down.
No, it's not. It, it's, it was running Friday night at six o'clock and soaking all of them cars.
It was-
Today it's running when people are walking through the park.
No, there's an issue with the irrigation system. Some of they, they've had to do manual. Uh, so it's the pumps that are coming out of those tanks. Uh, so to not have it burn up during the process, they've had to run some of them manual, but I'll get an update on that.
Okay. Cause it's just, the worst thing that we can have is have fifty people mad because their cars soaked. And I, and I know that's recycled water, so.
I talked to, uh, I was talking to someone down there at the park last Tuesday and it was an issue even last Tuesday, that like the issue-
Well, I saw them pumping water. I assumed they were filling the tanks up.
Yeah.
But didn't we just stick a hundred and forty thousand dollar in some pump system there?
Well, that's why we have the contractor coming back to, yeah.
Okay. Well, I just, I just, it, and it's not, it doesn't look good for us when we're watering at those times of days and, and people are trying to get to their cars or, today I went by it twice and the sprinklers were going where people are generally walking the trails. So, um, at least now I understand that there was, you know, something going on there. Um, fishing and fishing for friends was Saturday, another great event. They had like sixty-two people, I think they had seventy-five originally signed up with a ten-person waiting list. Uh, I'm sure the weather chased some people off. And now they're having a conversation about, you know, sometimes when things are free, they've kinda write it off. They, they might put a little monetary thing on it to just, uh, encourage. But what a great event again. I mean, it is, it is so, I, I stuck around for a few hours. I had to go. I had some other events I had to go to and, and, uh, but what they do with those kids and what they learn is, is absolutely amazing. They come out of there with a fishing pole and, um, a goodie bag and they learn how to tie knots and learn how to hook, hook minnows and, and then go out and fish. And obvious, you know, the rain kinda knocked that down this year. It's too bad, but, um, it's a great project. I did talk to the DNR, um, got a little, little report on the health of the Fireman's Park. He said that, you know, that they're not stocking it with bluegills, uh, sunnies anymore. They're, they're stocking it with bass because the bass will eat some of the little ones. And he talked about that a normal lake or the clay hole has a hundred and forty, I'm assuming that's fish per something. And he said, a normal lake is more like forty. So they may even go in there and try to do some netting to try to get some fish out of there. He says he's not sure, but he's gonna try to do that. But he thinks that, that he doesn't wanna put northerns in there with the swimming beach. But he said the bass will feed off of some of the smaller fish and, and help fix that up. So I thought it was rather interesting.
Always got bit by the sunfish.
Yeah, well, yeah, there is that. There is, there is that. But, but I thought that was better than saying it's, uh, it's terrible in there. The fish can't survive and everything else. But, and, and the conservation people were there from Carver County and she brought pills of water and she says it's actually pretty clear, but she was surprised at the water temperature already that it was like seventy-nine degrees at surface temperature.
Even some of the big lakes are already up to seventy-six.
And they're, they're having, that creates some issues so fast, so, um. Already talked about, uh, they told me that there was, there's been some issues with, I, I mentioned it earlier about the sound quality. I believe that Mike told me that that's fixed, that so hopefully that's not an issue. If you're, if you're having an issue, please let us know so, cause we don't know sitting up here if-
No, but just before you finish it, if you can get here and something I wanna ask, so.
Okay. And then are we doing, it kinda came up in our, we had a, a meeting prior to this. Are we doing the alley between second and third on the east side? Are we redoing that alley this year? Because I, one of the businesses said, someone told her that we were doing that and that was part of the second street project. I'm not sure and I wanted to try to get back to her, but-
I don't think it's this summer because we have to tie it together with the parking improvements back there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I know that alley is kind of, that alley's in tough shape.
Yep.
Um, but, but she was worried about, you know, if, if that was, if that was happening this year, so it's not happening. Okay.
I, no, I, I, I better make sure, for sure, but I, I don't think so because I-
Well, I've never seen anything in our bidding and I, and I didn't know if it was, but I didn't know if it was bid with that and not with the intention of doing it.
No, that I know it wasn't, but, uh, I think the intent was more to tie it together with the parking when that comes off of forty-one and redoing the parking lot back there.
Okay.
Otherwise we could really tear up what we just completed.
And I don't know, are we burying there? Cause there's a lot of power up that alley.
Yep. So it'd be the same sort of concept of burying utilities like the other alleys.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks. I can get back to her. Um, then the other thing I got, uh, question about those dumpster bags. Do we have some sort of a thing about how long they can sit? I don't know how that kinda goes with the stuff we're looking at. But because, and, and the guy that, that called me on it, I, I kinda believe him is, is that people buy them and think they're like thirty dollars.
Right.
But then they call-
Like a hundred and twenty.
Then they call the sanitation company a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty bucks to get rid of them. Now it sits there, but, uh, he says there's one in, in, actually it's our neighborhood that's been there for a long time. And, and I don't know, that's one of those new things. Is that something now that we have to look at?
It's a lot more popular.
Well, I think our ordinance probably does address that. We can check into it. But it should, and I sort of pointed out in the staff report earlier, one of the things that we're gonna do, uh, before we even sort of really aggressively get out into public code compliance is to go through our ordinances first.
Right, absolutely.
And, I mean, if we don't have the right base to work with, it's like garbage in, garbage out. Uh, and so-
Well, like these bags, that's all new.
These are, these are all different.
It's not a dumpster. You know, what is it?
And, and what are we trying to accomplish and all that type of stuff? So, yeah, these types of things we'll be really looking at.
You can stretch it and say that it's trash stored outside of a receptacle, which would violate the nuisance order.
But I, you know, and, and as, you know, after he called me, I think about that and there are, you see them a lot.
Oh, yeah. They're becoming a lot more popular.
Some of them have been sitting there for a while, so.
I think you're right though, is I think people see thirty bucks and they're like, wow.
Yeah.
It's a lot cheaper than getting a dumpster.
Thirty to get it, a hundred and fifty to have it hauled away.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and then it sits and the bag actually starts to break down and as it sits, so it's a mess.
And something that somebody had brought up, just to tag onto that, um, that I've seen and I wondered if the city at any point would think about implementing it. And that's, you know, just a cleanup day for your yards, but a cleanup day for-
Yeah.
Things.
It's like Bloomington does the big cleanup day.
Yeah, and previous city I was in, we worked with, uh, one of the haulers and got a huge roll-off dumpster. And then we had a truck parked there where people could pay right there, bring their microwaves, you know, like in a parking lot. They could drive up with a microwave, pay their fee and move on, um, or old TV or something like that. But, um, there were other people who couldn't haul it, so we had public works go around and pick up stuff in the city truck. Um, and they would hand it to them.
It's a slipper slope for that too, though.
But it's rather than, huh?
That's a, that's a big project for a city, I mean, we're not huge, but that's a-
No, but there are cities, like he said, Bloomington has such a thing and, and little cities have such a thing, so.
All their friends were bringing all their garbage over to that city.
Yeah, they do.
And, and I don't know, I kind of, I have a hard time with that one. I don't know that I can support it.
I have a, I have a hard time with people throwing TVs out, you know, on the side of the roads or in the ditches and, and, uh, or storing it outside and building it up outside of your yard.
They say Best Buy takes them back, but you know, we gotta recycle them.
I would take it to the recycle center. Yeah.
I mean, you have to pay for it.
You have to pay for it, but yeah. But it's not expensive.
No, it's ten bucks, I think.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we have, we have the ability, people have the ability to almost get rid of most everything.
But not furniture, right?
Furniture they don't take at the environmental center, so that's something that there is a-
They do take mattresses though.
They do take mattresses.
They start doing that, yep. So even if it was just for that type of thing, you know, cause you see a lot, I see posts on social media that'll say, how do I get rid of a sofa? How do I get rid of a water heater? How do I get rid of things like that?
The water heater can go up to the recycle.
Yep. Yep.
Most of the things can go to recycling other than furniture.
Yep.
All right, last thing, uh, I have, um, Representative Joe Hoppy has decided not to rerun for.
I was surprised.
And I just want to say, you know, um, thanks to, uh, Mr. Hoppy for everything. He's been a real advocate for CHSCA. Um, I don't think that we would have gotten the one forty, forty-four interchange if it wasn't for, um, Joel. Um, and he really worked hard to get that thing done for us and which is gonna be a huge benefit for the city.
And one-on-one too.
And, and he pretty, pretty much got the one-on-one money and they've got that now, so they'll be working on that, um, next. So he's been, uh, very, very helpful for, um, his district and he definitely will be missed. And I, I just wanted to mention that and say thank you for everything that he's done and I'm sure he's got an earful here and there. I've been with him when he's got an earful, so, um, but, uh, he's just, time to move on, he said, so, good for him. But thanks, Joe.
Absolutely.
Right, uh, you had said you wanted to say something. We normally don't do it at this time, but I'm gonna give you that opportunity very quickly.
Okay.
Um.
Uh, Mark Gross, former coat, and.
Oh, that's why I was trying to sit and trying to figure out who you were. Okay.
That's, that's all right, that's right. And I don't know how you guys work, but, but so, thank you for allowing me to talk. Um, but I'm starting to get nervous that I'm not keeping track of things and that I'm gonna miss my key dates. And Nate helped pull a rabbit out of a hat today, that I thought we might have missed like almost a whole month of planning work. And, and so if I'm missing things, please stay on me.
That's his job. He's the quarterback.
Well, I know, I know that, but I thought.
Phone number, you got my email?
Yeah, no, I, I know that, but I thought I was, there was something supposed to be an approval thing for.
That's coming up in the next part.
Yep, that's coming up.
Or it's not done.
We're not done.
Okay.
We have an economic development meeting that happens.
I was just gonna mention it. In case you're wondering, your item's still coming up.
Yeah. I kept looking at you and I had you for somebody else and now, yes, no. But, so we have an economic development meeting. That will come up in, in about five minutes.
Okay, my pulse can go.
No, no worries. I'd rather that than you, uh, go away upset that you missed an opportunity to do something, so. Um, all right. So for everyone out there, um, I assume five minutes again, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, three minutes?
Uh, five.
Four?
Four, yeah.
Three minutes from now, after we adjourn, um, we'll come back and start our EDA meeting. So, um, and the last call out of here, otherwise that entertains a motion.
So.
Motion by Councilmember Bowe.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Geisler to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned and we'll be back in three and a half minutes.